Thank you Board of Education for this wonderful invitation this evening. At this time, we're going to honor some wonderful student athletes. All League, All West New York, All West New York Scholar Athletes, and our three Niagara Frontier League Champions for the fall. Our fall is another very successful year. We're awfully very proud of our, all of our programs that participated in the fall. We've had sectional finalists, sectional winners, and many other high achievements for our student athletes from the fall. So, we're here to honor them. We're moving into February here, but with the weather and getting all the information that we needed, we certainly want to give their due and recognize these individuals. Some might be coming in late with a lot of events and some might be having to say hello, hello, and goodbye quickly because they're obviously these young men and women have quite a few things on their agendas throughout the day. So without further ado, we're going to start our program. The first group that we have, and again, some are going to be here with us this evening and some will not. But I'd like to honor our All West New York Scholar Athletes. Again, this is something that the Buffalo News has done for many years. And we had fourteen total represented from Niagara Field. And we have two that the committee from Section Six determines through their resume and their information that they provide. So for All West New York winners for Niagara Field are Olivia Barbarosa Robinson and Joseph Cavacas. So we'll round up lots of.
No, yep, I saw him, yep.
Can you just bring, can you just bring in, might bring in Olivia and Joe? Thanks. So again, we're awfully proud of them. You know, two of our higher tier student athletes. Joseph had one to jump the gun, but his last time when we checked, he's number one in the senior class. So we'll send some things or those fluctuate, but we're awfully excited. So perfect, without further ado, Olivia and Joe, line up.
And I know a couple you might have to leave right away, grab a cookie before you leave. Very important.
Next, next on our agenda, we have, so how we'll break it down is we did our scholar, or two scholar athletes from West New York. And then we're individual achievements for each of our sports teams here. And then we'll have our three NFL Champions at the end. So our first group up is our girls soccer team. We have five individuals that have been successful in girls soccer and first, second, and third team. So first team, we have Marissa Ricker, first team Niagara Frontier League Ball League, and they GNN Co-Player of the Year. Marissa, just wave your, wave your hand. Okay, you're good right there. We are, we have a, we don't have all five here, we do have three. And we'll go, we'll go through those in a minute. We also have Coach Monahan here. Coach Monahan will say a few words towards the end in regards to the NFL team. The second one, unfortunately, she couldn't be here. Caitlin Parker, Caitlin was also first team Niagara Frontier League Ball League and fifth team class double A, so round of applause for Caitlin Parker. Sydney Galus, Sydney give a little wave, second team NFL Ball League and GNN Co-Player of the Year, Sydney Galus. Cassie Bocher, third team NFL Ball League. She's not her team, but round of applause for her. And then finally Leah McDonald, third team Niagara Frontier All League. Again, terrific job. A break over here, a little quick wave, a round of back, grab a cookie, and you guys will be coming back momentarily for your NFL honors. Thanks ladies. Yeah, oh yeah, sorry, she goes first. Are we just bringing the boys next? John is ready.
He's right here.
Right there. Just bring it. That's why I just. I know, I've been doing this for a couple of years. Boys soccer, I mean, boys soccer trip program, Mr. Colter's been doing this for a long time. Every year he's, he has great success, always up there for the NFL Championship or around there. And, you know, have a couple of trips there in the last several years to the regional competition. So we're awfully excited once again for the team next year, but just a tremendous job this year as well. Again, we have Coach Colter here. We have some individual awards from boys soccer. First one we do have here, having give a little wave, having every first team Niagara Frontier League. Aiden Bennett, first team NFL Ball League. Connor West, first team Niagara Frontier All League. Dante DeFiglio, first team NFL Ball League and All West New York Large School Team. Noah Seifert, second team Niagara Frontier League All League. Michael Ramboli, third team Niagara Frontier League All League. Once again, the team played in both the Niagara Frontier League Championship Game and the Section Six semifinal game. So congratulations to Colt Colter and your student athletes have a tremendous shot this season. Congratulations. Next, we have our boys cross-country team. Once again, we have Coach Smith here with some of the boys as well. And we're just going to do the individual awards here. Present for today, we have, or when we, I'll just say a little wave when I, when I call your name, but I'm also read out the others that are not present. Again, boys cross-country, our individual achievements, Joe Cavacas, first team NFL Ball League. Ian Kruger, second team Niagara Frontier League All League. Xavier Severance, second team NFL Ball League. Tierney Brady, second team NFL Ball League. Congratulations. Excellent, our girls cross-country team individuals, we'll be meeting them again later in our program for their NFL Championship. Tremendous season for our girls cross-country team. We also have a little special dedication to them as well from achieving a nice achievement here in Boulder. But first, for individuals, we have Teagan Brady, first team Niagara Frontier League All League. Nike Cross Regional Qualifier, Runner-up of the Week. Emily Desiderio, first team NFL Ball League, Nike Cross Regional Qualifier. Runner-up All West New York Eighth Grade Runner-of-the-Year and Runner-of-the-week for the Buffalo News. Once again, Emily Desiderio. Always special when you coach your own child, and that is Coach Smith's daughter, as many of us know. Gabrielle McKenzie, first team NFL Ball League and Double-A West New York Sportsmanship Thriller. Julian Davies, second team Niagara Frontier League Ball League. Leah Boss, third team NFL Ball League. Congratulations. It's like at this time, I'd like to present to some of these girl, of these girls here. Our banners and each sheet. And I have Coach Smith line up and talk about the NXR. Congratulations.
So there are three girls, not only winning, that have all this year qualified for the championship race at the Nike qualifier for Nationals. And they picked the top twenty teams in the region. To honor them is all region team. We won it last year, and we want to think of this shit, so I'm really proud of all of their work and their dedication to the season. Can I get a picture? So it'll go high in the gym and I'll never get a picture again.
Hey, our boys volleyball team. They had a very nice year as well. One here today, representing for individual achievements, we have Lu Bo, second team Niagara Frontier League All League. Congratulations to Lu, round of applause for him. We have here Jason Milakowski, second team Niagara Frontier League All League.
Thanks. Congratulations, well done. Thank you.
Okay, I'll use my old school Zed Zed voice here. So next we have girls volleyball. So girls volleyball, as we know, both as a great team. Another great year for them as well this year. A couple of real individual awards here today. And first of all, off we have Julia Quichoff. Julia was first team Niagara Frontier All League. All West New York, second team for large schools. Julia's not here today, but a round of applause for Julia. Officially Lindsay Tyler, first team Niagara Frontier All League. All West New York, first team for large schools, great honor for her. Abigail Torrenzi, thirteen, Niagara Frontier League All League for girls volleyball. Round of applause for her. Okay, next on our agenda, right along, we have the boys football team. We have several achievements in there. Where the boys football team, great year for programming with the boys. A couple of numbers here of the football team for the individual achievements. It says NFL, but it's really just Section Six, first team. That's what I say, so. First, we have Sean Watson. Sean Watson, first team NFL, first team All League. Sean Watson, round of applause for Sean. Next, we have Kayshon Matthews, first team NFL All League. Mike Saka, second team NFL All League, or second team All League. Congratulations to Mike. Dylan Pringle, second team All League. Doesn't want applause, but Dylan, he came here, destroyed that shoulder shirt. Hope Ryan is like, sure he's done? Said his shoulder's. But it's really good to be on top of Dylan, because the way he plays on the field, you know, he stops, stops. So really nice job. Adam Tyler, second team All League. Adam Tyler, round of applause. Tristan Fox, second team All League. Christian Turner, honorable mention. Mason Meisner, honorable mention. Eric Chase, honorable mention. And Jason Cerro, honorable mention. Next, we have our boys golf team, so boys and girls golf team. We have three individual honors today, this evening for boys golf. RJ Delasani, first team NFL All League. RJ. Quentin Brick, third team NFL Ball League. And Brianna Scazafaba, thirteenth NFL All League. And it's quite a nice honor because we have Brianna, female player on our men's team, and she does a tremendous, tremendous job. So great honor for Brianna, so congratulations to her, so it's true. Girls tennis. We have Cindy Marsh, first team singles and All West New York. Cindy, congratulations to her. Ariana Malashevsky, second team singles. Congratulations to Ariana. Gabrielle Stanley, first team doubles. Congratulations to Gabrielle. Addison Hansi, first team doubles. Ashley Lipt, second team doubles. And Michaela Brooks, second team doubles. Congratulations to those individuals, we'll bring them up again towards the end. We do NFL Champions, congratulations. Final individual sport that we have that we're going to honor our individuals before we get to our team NFL Champions is girls swimming. First, we have Myra Keller. Several accomplishments for Myra. She's a very accomplished swimmer, for sure. First team two hundred medley relay, first team one hundred butterfly, first team two hundred freestyle relay, and first team one hundred backstroke. And as of last November, we did our signing days. She's going to be swimming at the University of Minnesota in the Big Ten. So congratulations to Myra Keller. Ava Polling, first team medley relay, first team two hundred freestyle relay, first team one hundred backstroke, second team two hundred freestyle. Ava Polling, ladies and gentlemen. Ava will also be attending Division One School Program at University of Buffalo, correct? University of Buffalo, yeah, congratulations to Ava, that's terrific as well. So nice to see these, these girls and boys playing at the next level. Hannah McColling, first team two hundred medley relay, first team two hundred freestyle relay, and third team one hundred butterfly. Congratulations to Hannah. Brianna McColling, first team two hundred relay. Congratulations to Brianna. We have here Madely Huff, also with Coach Casaro. Madely, first team two hundred freestyle relay. Madely Huff, ladies and gentlemen. Congratulations to all our swimmers, another great year for Coach Casaro. All right, I'm going to take a break from the mic if we will for a moment. And we're going to bring in our couple of girls, girls from tennis to line up. Coach needs support, she cannot be here to do some family obligations. So we're going to announce each of the girls, each girl present, and who are not here will get a nice certificate. Congratulating them on their NFL Championships. So our girls tennis team, some, some are here, but I say your name, just give a little wave to the crowd and also to our Board of Education. So congratulations, girls, once again, most coaching needs does a tremendous job with you guys. And every year I say this, it, it's got to be a routine, but it's going to be an NFL champion, and it's always girls tennis. She does a great job. And kudos to you girls too, for doing an awesome job as well. So our girls tennis varsity team. Michaela Brooks, Caleb Orzansky, Cecilia Ellis, Carly Fowler, Addison Hansi, Leila Kalada, Kiara King, Ashley Lipt, Lila Mansour, Chloe March, Cindy Marsh, Ariana Malashevsky, Isabella Page, Victoria Rose, and Gabriella Stan. Once again, round of applause to all of the girls. Two more team, NFL team champions we would like to honor. At this time, we're going to bring back Coach Monahan and the girls varsity soccer team. And we have many of the girls soccer team here looking very dapper in their nice black sweatshirts. So I'm going to pass over to Coach Monahan just to say a few words and introduce these fine young, great student athletes of ours. Coach Monahan.
Just briefly, I wanted to say what a great year it's been for the girls. It's been so much fun coaching them, such an honor to be a part of this team. A few highlights with, the girls finished this year with a fifteen and two record. We had five, five players named to all NFL teams with Marissa and Caitlin, Marissa Ricker and Caitlin Parker, first team. Sydney Galus, second team. Casey Mosher and Leah McDonald on third team. Caitlin Parker and Marissa Ricker were also named to second team All Western New York. The girls also finished NFL Champions and the Section Six Champions. Without further ado, here are your twenty, our 2023 Section Six Champions. Sophia Blankenship, Alyssa Kleeman, Riley Colter, Ava DeBol, Sydney Galus, just wave your hands when your name's called, there you go. Kirsten Gundell, Eliana Higgins, Emma Hurley, Addison Lucas, Miracle Martin, Ava May, Leah McDonald, Cameron Meisner, Casey Mosher, Caitlin Parker, Brielle Peterson, Marissa Ricker, Lauren Soto, Rowan Springer, Alyssa Strangio, Luciana Strangio, and Abigail Zimmerman. Thank you very much, and go Falcons.
Great job, and once again, congratulations to our 2023 Section Six Champions Girls Varsity Soccer. Next, we're going to bring in another Niagara Frontier League Champion, Girls Varsity Cross Country, once again, Coach Smith.
Um, we had a wonderful cross-country season. It was a pleasure, a pleasure to coach this girls team. We set out over the summer with a high goal of repeating as NFL Champions and re-qualifying for NXR, which they were successful in both. We went undefeated in the league, we were seventeen and zero, winning the NFL Championship with an NFL Champion and the runner-up NFL Champion of our team. Being first team All League, we had three girls on that spot. Teagan Brady, Emily Desiderio, and Gabby McKenzie, all underclassmen. And second team All League was another underclassmen, Julian Davies. And third team All League was a freshman, Leah Boss. So the future for this team looks really bright. We're really sad to lose some of our seniors and our leadership, but we have high goals and we will, once a Falcon, always a Falcon. So I'm an NFL Championship team. We have senior Olivia Barbarosa Robinson, senior Alexis Vissel, freshman Leah Boss, freshman Teagan Brady, freshman Autumn Burke, junior Julian Daisy Davies, eighth grader Emily Desiderio, junior Peyton Diasper, junior Gabby McKenzie, junior Dea Vitale, senior Izzy Poap, and freshman.
Last time, grab some cookies. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, that concludes our recognition of our fall athletes, once again. Always a pleasure to come up and speak to Board of Education for these occasions. You know, hopefully we can do it again in a couple of months for our winter sports because they're following suit with their fall athletes and the success that they're having so far. With that, just a week or two left in the regular season for our winter sports and, you know, we'll be going around Section Six in West New York to watch our winter student athletes participate in sectionals and I know they'll be very successful like they always are. So once again, thank you, have a great evening, appreciate it.
We'll reconvene the meeting at twenty minutes two, if we want to.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
All right, we had a recognition of our scholar athletes already, so we'll move on to the consensus agenda items. Call for a motion to approve the consensus agenda as submitted.
I'll second.
Let's move in second, and all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed or abstaining, motion carries. Call for a motion to accept the personnel report as submitted.
So vote.
I'll second. All right, making the separate, I am going to separate number one for discussion. All those in favor then of accepting items two through twelve, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed or abstaining, motion carries, I'll turn it over to Dan.
It's my pleasure tonight to recommend to the board Tom Stack for tenure. And it's probably hard for a lot of us to believe that it's been four years. Mr. Stack's created many, many efficiencies for our HR department. He's been a key premier to our CDO committee, really focusing on a number of the wellness initiatives in our district. He's just proves himself capable time and time again for taking on any and all tasks that are given to him. And he's certainly been a huge benefit to our cabinet, to our instructional leadership team, to our district leadership team. He is a, as a professional, he's always learning, he's always willing to try to figure out a new, better way to do something that'll be better for the district, that'll be better for kids. And again, it's my pleasure to recommend him for tenure tonight.
And all those in favor of approving Tom's tenure, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed or abstaining, motion carries, congratulations. All right, Policy Committee. We have the second reading, the following policies. Policy twenty-one ten, the Orienting Training Board Members. Policy thirty-one ten, for media and municipal governments and senior citizens. Policy fifty-two forty, school tax assessment and collection property tax exemptions. Policy sixty-four eleven, use of email in the school district. Policy seventy-three fifty, timeout and physical restraint, and policy seventy-four twelve, student voter registration and preregistration. Since this is a standing committee, we do not need a motion. Anything to discuss on those? Not then, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed or abstaining, those policies pass. Sufficiency Student Members Report.
So, we're, we have, I'll show without it. So we're going to be having a, our, done this for at least a couple of years, at least since I've been in high school. We're doing the juniors versus seniors volleyball match, our tournament again. That's going to be happening, happening March seventh, so that should be exciting. We're already halfway through the school year with the second market period just closing up a few weeks ago. Um, we're already halfway through the school year, um, with the second market period just closing up a few weeks ago. So that's, uh, that's crazy. Oh, um, and winter sports are also coming to a close pretty soon.
Yeah, it is, that is amazing though, if you're into sports one, it just seems we just started everything in Syria, getting closer to wrapping everything up. Yeah. Yeah, they're already doing outdoor track right now with our practice, it's been so nice, we've been practicing outside. Alright, we have, um. You have a couple of things on there for external communications to the board, uh, the internal claims audit report is added on to it. Uh, we'll move over to the superintendent's report, oh, actually, I got some of the president's report. Um, I attended the virtual Capitol Conference last week, uh, where, with NISBA. And, um, some of the takeaways are quite interesting. Uh, the first thing that was talked about, they had both the House and the, and the Senate's, uh, state senate's, um, education leadership talking. And while they were in support of putting money back in for, uh, and, you know, negotiating with the governor to bring the, the funding back up. Both of them, and then the representative for the governor's office mentioned, uh, almost word for word that we have to. Right-size the, the school district funding for the decrease in student enrollment across the state. So that was the common statement from all three of them and which. I, I can tell you from the message board, the messages that were going on during it, um, will, you know, raise a couple eyebrows. Up with that, the other one that was brought up.
Hey, what do you mean by that?
I think they're basically preempting a possible cut in school funding down the road. Cause they're saying that we've had s- s- students, a decrease in population, decrease in students across the board, across the state, then. We should be decreasing and lowering our funding level of education. According to that.
And that could be in certain areas, not all areas.
Yeah, it does, but I mean, they make it as a general statement, you know? Um, the other thing, and this is something that, um, I know a couple of the, I, I, in the messages for the board presidents that were watching during that time. Uh, over in the capital region, they have a number of school districts that have already purchased their electric bus fleet. Because they're smaller school districts, only need a few of them. The takeaway from that was, is that the published mileage that the company said they would get per charge is quite significantly less than real world. Driving. So, um, it was reiterated to pause that again and to push the, you know, the, the governor's office and the legislature to pause. That entire initiative again, because until there's a study done where we actually see what the real world driving level is. Um, the other part of that was, is that even two, two identical school buses from the same company, same company. Both of them had different mileages, so it wasn't just they were lower, one was quite lower than another one. So it's a faulty battery, whatever, so you also have on there the, um, you know, quality control issues. There possibly that there, but it was significantly less, it was not like even close. Uh, the, the one was saying that they had to actually come back to their, their garage to charge between runs. And they shouldn't have had to do that. So, alright, superintendent.
Thank you. Uh, we'll start with Tom, uh, Iron.
Yes, thank you. Um, just wanted to update the board, uh, two out of the last three weeks, we brought. Uh, a QR code, uh, in the Sentinel as well as a written ad. Of course, putting on an additional press for bus drivers, bus attendants especially. Uh, we are in a pretty good position overall in the district with our staffing. We're also looking forward to the next few years seeing hopefully a replenishment in our substitute teacher pool. Uh, as well as those, uh, maybe certified areas that are, that are hard to find. Uh, with some of the new, uh, pushes for certification and advancement in that area. So that being said, uh, you know, we are in budget season, uh, we're gonna take a close look at. Uh, you know, how to, how to make things best work for our district with the staff that will be applying, and it appears very. Good for our future that people wanna be a faculty, so I think we're in a pretty good position. Thank you.
Thank you. What you're seeing on the screens here, um, this past Friday night, so February second, we held our. District-wide elementary movie night. The elementary movie night is put together and planned by our CDEP committee. If you remember, our CDEP committee is our comprehensive district educational planning committee. And that committee is really focused on our third goal, which has everything to do with engagement. And we had a hundred and eighty-five, I think, people show up to our elementary movie night. The movie, as you can see, was Minions. Uh, one of our parents at Eric Road, uh, her and her sister, actually. If you look at the middle costume right there, they actually took turns, um, in that costume as kids were, as they were coming in. They get their picture taken with the minion, and then if you see those other two little minions in that picture there, there were, um. Two of our students who actually had those costumes for Halloween, and I think we're pretty happy to get back into them. It was a really, really fun, uh, night. Uh, we had our CDEP meeting this evening. That group's already looking at next year, knowing that our auditorium won't be in flight for next year. So they're actually looking at maybe doing something in the fall. We do have that outdoor log screen, that would be the first plan, maybe with a backup, having to go into our cafeteria. Um, either at the high school or maybe even middle school, as a backup, just in case like the winds or the weather's not good. But again, it was, it was really an awesome night, and I wanna thank all of the adults who helped us organize that, members of our CDEP committee, some of our staff. As well, one of our high school students, uh, also helped out, so again, really, really neat evening. Next, um. Yesterday, in this, uh, in this ALC, we hosted the tri-district student leadership conference. It was a student leadership conference made up of eighth through twelfth graders from Niagara Weefield, North Tonawanda, and Niagara Falls. Niagara Falls and North Tonawanda had actually started this, uh, collaboration last year. Um, we passed our way into it because we thought it would be really neat for us to be part of it. Uh, our district's very own Johnny Parks did a presentation. At, uh, to the students and the students were able to ask some questions. Students that were in, um, circles, uh, at tables around here and had an opportunity to get to know each other a little bit. And then they did some, uh, answer and talked about some questions that pertain to the presentation. Again, it was a really, uh, great event. And when we were asking the students for the feedback, you know, one of the things that came up multiple times was. Well, we wanna do it again, but we also could, could we, could we involve other districts? So what I see is this only growing, you know, to the point where it becomes, you know, a county-wide, uh, student leadership conference. So, again, pretty neat thing, we're really happy to be invited in, um, by North Tonawand and Niagara Falls. On April first, we're scheduled to start our auditorium construction. It's looking like that timeline may move back just a little bit, um, just based on when our, um. Bids actually, uh, come in. So we're, we're, we're monitoring that a little bit, but it'll be close still to April first. At that point, the auditorium will no longer be in use, okay? Um, the front circle will be changed, we're gonna, we have some diagrams that are still being finalized. But we'll get some documents as we get a little closer out to families on how that's gonna change, drop off in the morning at the high school, okay? As a reminder, we do not have a meeting on February twenty-first, we moved that meeting to February twenty-eighth, so mark your calendars for that. Brian, mark your calendar, okay? Many of you probably saw, we put out a communication about foundationing, um, and the governor's budget. It was a little video message, uh, within the next few days, when we will be following up. Asking for families to, um, send an electronic letter. Everything will be, um, preset in the letter. Um, but asking them to send that, although if they do, do put their address in, they click send, it will send it to the governor. And to our representatives in, in the state. So we're asking for some support there, we'll be talking a little bit later this evening about the budget and the governor's budget. I think you'll then know why we're asking for some support, that's all.
Any questions in superintendent's report? Um, just one thing did, Ed, Dan and I talked about during the week, I was sitting out waiting for, to pick up my son and. Um, there's a couple of times I've talked about this, and I know the bus loop's closing off, but we're gonna have the other, other loop up there, but. We'd have districts, uh, buses from other districts trying to negotiate the loop while cars are in there after school and they're dropping things off and we've. The bus was a little stuck in there, almost hitting a car that day, so. Um, we, what I've asked Dan to do is that once construction's done, everything, we, our signs get a little bit bigger about that and. Um, we, so that we do not have that issue with them trying, while cars are double parked, them trying to get through there.
And then just as a follow-up, we actually, we're gonna, we done, the permanent signs are gonna go up before that, before the, uh, before it's done. One, one will say, um, no buses in the loop, the other one's going to say, buses this way with an arrow, showing everybody where they need to go. Because it's really important to have it, when we have this smaller circle, then those are gonna be permanent signs, so it will stay up after construction.
Alright, uh, awards of finance.
Thank you. We provided a presentation at the last meeting, we've added some slides, we wanna make sure that tonight we go through all of the pieces of this budget presentation, okay? And if you have questions, we encourage you, of course, to ask. The first two slides are actually the legislative priorities that were put out by the New York State Council of School Superintendents. I'm gonna go over a few of these here, the ones that are not covered under NISBA's, uh, legislative priorities. So the first one there is to modify the annual professional performance review, the APRS, most people know it. We're just asking for local control of the APR, okay? The second one that's highlighted there is the fixed civil service. Two pieces of this. One, make sure that it's easier for people who live in close proximity, maybe not the same county. To apply for jobs because there's nobody in those titles, it's so hard to find people these days. So even if they do something where it's the neighboring counties, we need to change that, okay, that's really important. Um, and the second thing is when people get in a job and they make the decision to move into a job. You need to let them stay there if they've done good work. Right now, the way that it stands is if they take a job and there's no test, they have to wait for that test. In some cases, they have to wait a really long time for that test. And if they don't score well, someone else could then bump them out, even if they've done a great job. There's zero incentive for people to move into a position if there's no test in that situation, let's face it. The marketplace is incredibly competitive. People are not going to make that life choice if they know that, you know, six months, someone could bump them out, or in nine months, someone can bump them out. Expand the reserve fund, um, and create flexibility there, there's two things with this, one. Board of Education should have the ability, in my opinion, to move money around in the different reserves with their vote. Right now, they can do that with some reserves, but not others. As, uh, Mr. Sabo mentioned earlier. It, there's talk about it getting a little bit tighter maybe in the years to come here, right? With, with the state and with the budget. With that said, Board should have the authority to move money from one reserve to another if they feel like they need to. The second one is, and we talk about this one all the time, there's a four percent un- inappropriate fund balance limit that. Only school districts have to live by, municipalities don't, they need to raise that, we've, I know you know the answer. In our district, to this question, why else is it really important for us to be able to have extra money in our reserve fund? What do we have to pay for out of time? What budget? Costco or. So we don't have the, uh, the funds to pay for that out of time if any of the funding comes in late. New York State's been giving that funding in a, in a fair amount of time recently, but we have that as a liability always hanging out there. To that funding, so, uh, we, we would hope that they would do that, we're asking them to consider that. Increased capital outlay right now is a hundred thousand dollars, we'd like that to go to a hundred fifty thousand dollars. Because we've done some larger projects, we haven't been doing the capital outlay projects, but many districts do. We have done them in the past, we can certainly see doing them again, it's not worth it for us to do it for a hundred thousand dollars. It's like seventy thousand dollars worth of work, have to pay for everything else. Uh, extend the retiree earning limit exemptions, this is for teachers. And for people who are civil service. We, we're asking them to extend this for another year, too, these people are filling really important jobs for many districts in New York State. There's districts who, somebody retires, they can't get a teacher in that area, they're hiring that person right back. Cause they need to, there's nobody, nobody else should be in that scene. So we're asking them to extend that for another year, um, maybe multiple years, at least another year. Um, it also applies to law enforcement. Many, uh, many districts out there are hiring, um, people from law enforcement who have retired. Whether they're working with another security firm or something like that. Taking away the earning limit will make it more likely that they may retire. Open up full-time jobs for new people coming in, they can then go take a job that could still help out school districts. Uh, modifying the tax cap, uh, notice that we don't have a number attached because there's not supposed to be one. Right, that it's supposed to be a levy limit, and there's other factors that go into that, there's no particular number that is allowed, the, the levy limit. And by, and, and let's come on, and, and I've heard our, our local representatives, legislative representatives say this. Get rid of the idea that you could ever come up with a negative cap. The tax gap shouldn't be a negative number, that was never the intention. And then the last one, um, make it so that it's a, it's a law in New York State for schools to be able to start before September. Because some districts have that in their contract and the ability to do so. The reason for that, in two years, not next year, but the year, take that back, not twenty-four, twenty-five, not twenty-five, twenty-six. The year after that, gonna be really difficult to fit all the days in without starting earlier. If you have a hundred and eighty-day schedule, could be pretty difficult. We already have our special development days in August, some districts, that's not allowable in their contracts. Okay? Stating, so this is again a little bit what was talked about, um. I Steve earlier, the executive budget proposes a formula-based school aid increase of eight hundred twenty-five million dollars for two point four percent. That two point four percent number should jump out of here right away. What's gone up, two point four percent? Nothing. Everything's going up more than that. I, I just, honestly, I don't even know why I even posed that number. Cause it's just not real. But it's, that, that's the proposal. The second piece of that talks about fully funding expense-based aid, that's good, that isn't the governor's proposal. Okay, the governor is putting in there to fully fund expense-based aids, we support that. The governor's proposal is a departure from full funding of foundation aid. This is the first school year that we've been fully funded in our foundation aid, a little bit later, you're gonna see a graph with that. So we finally got there, and now the proposal is to not fully fund it. Right? Last one on there is eliminate the decades-long practice of save harmless. So all the school districts who were already fully funded in foundation aid over the past so many years have been receiving about a decade, about a decade. Have been receiving. Three percent, three percent to, to just cover the rollover costs if you were hold harmless. So think about this, the first year after we get to the point where we've had our full foundation aid, which is this year. Next year, the governor's proposing not to hold me harmless. And to give less than the formula, which I'll get to in a minute. The executive, uh, budget, uh, let's see. Uh, let's, let's jump down to the second one there, so how, how do you get to this two point one percent? So this is just foundation aid, so if you go back, just so everybody understands. It was a two point four percent overall increase, okay, then the governor's proposing, but now look at the top line. In foundation aid, it's only a two point one percent increase, the foundation aid is the aid that we can use for anything. Okay, it's what we write all of our checks out of, it's what we do our business out of from the state. So it's only a two point one percent increase. How do you get to that lower number? Well, if you look, the, the, the budget is using a lower inflationary factor of two point four. Well, if you look, the 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 budget is using a lower inflationary factor of two point four percent. The current law formula is three point eight percent. So when you say, how did you get that low number, that's how. Five hundred and seven million dollars would re- represent the smallest statewide foundation aid increase since fifteen sixteen. And what you're gonna hear, and I just want everybody to know this. What you're gonna hear is, well, that's cause we gave a whole bunch of money in in the 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 last couple of years. They gave a whole bunch of money to finally get it up to where they were fully funding foundation aid. What the formula called for. So you you know, you're gonna hear that rhetoric, well, we've been giving them a lot, huh, well, you've been giving us the money that the formula by law said you were supposed to be giving. That you weren't given. So you finally closed that gap. And now you're gonna come in with two point one percent. Uh, NISBA recommended full funding of foundation aid, to do that, you need nine hundred and twenty five million dollar increase to about. To foundation aid instead of five hundred and seven million that you can see at the top of the slide. You can see that's a that's one four hundred eighteen million dollar difference, that's significant. We showed you this last time, if you look at Niagara, we'd feel, um. Anyway, you'll get that when we fill the column, at the top, you see the number twenty four eight two eight six four seven. That number is our current foundation aid number. If you go down. And you down there, about halfway down the page, you see twenty four eight five three four two two. That's the new proposed amount for next year in the governor's proposal. It's a twenty four thousand seven hundred and seventy five dollar increase. Less than a tenth of a percent. Allison, tell me if I'm wrong, I don't, there's nothing that went up less than a tenth of a percent, right, as far as like the things that we paid for, right, okay, yeah. Okay, on on this slide, what you're seeing here is the foundation aid formula, Allison, do I talk about this?
So this, the blue line there just shows what our aid would be if it was given to us according to the formula over the years. The orange line is what was actually paid to us. And then at the end, you can see there's a a little dotted line, that's the governor's proposal, so it's below. What the calculation is and what is pretty much owed to us, slightly below, I think, what was what would be owed to us.
We are not a community school, however, if we were. What it would mean is that some of your money, your foundation aid money. You would have to actually set aside for particular types of costs. So imagine this, there are districts where actually going backwards in foundation aid. And those districts have to set aside money for particular things that the state's saying you should spend on this. Even though they're going backwards in foundation aid, so if all of a sudden you're a first time community school. And you're trying to run all of your other programs, they give you less money. And they say you have to use some of that money, cause everybody set it aside for you. We're saying don't do that, let districts determine how they spend their foundation aid. We already have a lot of aid that comes in that is specific, that is set aside for specific reasons, right? Uh, foundation aid isn't one of them. As far as reading instructions concerned, this is really simple. Make sure. Um, that as a district, districts are using evidence based scientifically proven. Research when it comes to choosing their reading programs and how we help kids learn. We've been doing that, districts have been doing that, uh, there's a lot of talk about, you know, individual or specific particular programs. That's not the way it works, you pick programs and you build around it, whatever those, whatever the deficiencies are of a particular program, you would make additions to it. You know, that's what our district has done, that's what most districts do. So keep that control local. This is a big one, it's huge. The state is one hundred percent right that school districts need to focus on student health and mental health. But there's a cost to that, we've all invested, districts have all invested in it. But with the mental health crisis and the fact that it's grown, a lot of districts use federal stimulus funds to close that gap. Those federal stimulus funds are gone after the school year. So counselors, social workers, people who were counting on help with with those mental health needs, they're gonna be gone. The governor has talked about school based health centers, if we want one, we'll get one. We want one. Everybody wants one, says school based. When you read some of the other information out there, it makes you think maybe though it's something that's gonna be maybe run by the county or or. It needs to be school based. Some of our students who need assistance, they need it right here and they need it immediately. And if they have to come back or they can't get here because they don't have transportation. We need to make sure that when they're here, they can get the services that they need and. We've partnered with a lot of outside agencies to provide some of these additional services for for our kids, that's great. Almost all of those slots are almost always filled. There are times when we have kids who we want to get some services, they can't. So we need this, um, it's a really important one. School safety, student wellness, you heard at the last meeting, we talked about there there needing to be a flexible grant for this. All districts have. Are finding ways to better, um, ensure the safety of their kids. As you know, in our district, we have weapons detectors, we have in our person every single, in every single building. But all of those things come at a cost, and some of those costs are annual costs. We spend approximately. Three quarters of a million dollars right now on school safety. With the all the officers that we have here during the day and in the evening, um, we think it's a really important investment. But no money's come with that, we've had to make those decisions because they're they're important. Obviously, it's a lot of money.
Uh, again, talking about zero emission buses, uh, the state is proposing to. Take some money from the Environmental Bond Act to give it to the to the schools through NICE citizens. And then this bit program, which are the grants that we apply for for the buses and the infrastructure, some of the infrastructure. Um, it's, it's, again, we've had these conversations going on and on, it's the cart before the horse. There's more out there for the buses themselves and the infrastructure, and the infrastructure needs to be in place before before the buses are purchased, so. The amount that's being offered right now isn't enough to to touch what the actual dollars are gonna be, um, to the districts. Um, electric school buses, again, um, all new buses purchased must be zero emissions by twenty twenty seven. Um, and by twenty thirty five, our entire fleet needs to be changed over, um. There's some state funding for charging infrastructure, again, some of the grants we've looked at also provides some funding for that. Uh, those charters and charging units and some of the other infrastructure, but. Not enough, and, uh, the proposal would authorize districts to lease or finance up to ten years rather than five. So for the school bus reporting, um, again, all these issues are gonna be required by the district to. Uh, submit to S E D. In addition to all the other reporting that's done, now they're putting this on us too, in addition to everything else. And some of these same issues are outstanding. This was asking to develop new statewide, regional and district specific, state funded feasibility plans. To assess the current timeline with a goal of making changes if necessary. Small and rural districts should be given extra attention due to unique challenges. Um, to allow for bus storage facility costs, to be eligible for state transportation aid. And to shorten the aid amortization period to seven years for purchases and leases, and to seek regular stakeholder engagement.
Just one more thing I would add to buses, because we believe that they should be slow rolling this. Doesn't mean we're not doing anything, okay, we've been working with, uh, NIPA, um, uh, national grid. National grid, we've had meetings in the last few weeks. There's plenty of, um, aid and grant money out there, it's just being really clear about how much you get. And what you can use it for, that we're trying to get a handle on. What we don't wanna do, um, is do nothing if we can get some of this stuff, especially in the infrastructure. Paid for before this money runs out, right, in other words. If this plan on twenty twenty seven, people having to start buying buses then, and then have that done by twenty thirty five. If that truly starts then. My guess is a lot of this early funding, when you hit twenty twenty seven, it's not gonna be there, they're trying to hook you, boy, yeah. So if we can do it in a strategic way, if we can do it so that it will be. Beneficial to our district, to our taxpayers, then we'll do it, but that's what we're looking at. And then we're working, and I'll tell you, NIPA has been a a really nice partner in this, educating us on some of this information, but we still have more.
School meals, uh, the the executive budget again invests an additional eleven million to continue the statewide subsidy that fully reverses schools. Participating in a community eligibility provision program. It allows participating schools to serve all their students free breakfast and lunch, but does not provide for fully universal. Universal school meal program for all schools. Rear end tech, um, uh, the executive budget does not include any changes to the cap, the salary cap on debatable salary expenses for both instructors. Nor does it provide for any increase in special services aid for non component districts. And at a time when both his enrollment and career and tech are growing faster, it's crucial. That that updated thirty thousand dollar cap in place be increased. Pre K. The big thing in this, it talked about a lot in our meetings, um, to allow districts to utilize the pre K funds for pre K transportation costs. Right now, we cannot do that, and again, most of the parents, some of the big issue is getting their kids transported to those programs. And to increase tuition rates for special education costs. The special education cost shift, so this is a big one, um, particularly for our district too, because of the amount of special education. Placements we have, so, uh, what the budget is proposing is that they eliminate the state share of costs, so. When you have kids going to these high cost programs because of their need, um. In the past, the state would pick up a portion of that expenditure and it's reduced over the years. As the as the years have gone on, the state share has been reduced, so. They're talking now eliminating the state share completely, I believe, so it would move the school district costs. To be much higher, which would increase our budget, so we'd have to budget more because we wouldn't be getting that revenue back from the state. Um, the S, at the bottom, you see the state estimates the cost shift would result in thirty million dollar burden on school districts. Reducing opportunities to invest in other valuable programs. And we'd be forced to continually absorbing unnecessary caution, cost shifts. This is, um, the current tax levy worksheet that I prepared, um. If I go start at the top, the prior year levy was thirty six million one hundred eighty four thousand six hundred thirty three dollars. The tax base growth factor, which is provided by New York State for Niagara County is one point zero zero seven four. And then to that, you add your base year pilots, which is for the current year twenty three, twenty four, your capital expenditures net of aid. And then multiply that by the level of level growth factor based on C P I, which this year it's one point oh two percent or two percent. And then from that, you subtract your pilots you expect to receive next year, and included in that pilot is. That pilot amount is the Amazon pilot, because they will be starting to collect next year for that, so that's included in there. Um, and then we had some exclusions, this year was the first year that I can remember, there was a pension exclusion, so the pension. Amounts have increased over two percentage points, um, and E R S, and you'll see a chart on that, um, a little later. But right now, our tax levy limit plus exclusions is thirty seven million two hundred ninety nine thousand four hundred five dollars. Which is three point oh eight percent. Yeah, so it's, uh, uh, it's at three percent right now. Just over three percent, that's the loving limit, that's the amount, you can't, if you go over that, you need a super majority budget vote.
That's higher than.
The levy limit?
Yeah, I think last year was like two point zero, I think, right? So, um, before I get into this slide, one thing I just wanna mention, Allison mentioned, um. The NASA pilot, so in the in the first, what we initially saw regarding that pilot was. Um, it was a fifteen year pilot, and the first. X number of years were all at ten percent. We confirmed that and then got the actual pilot like a week later. Last week, I think it was, and it wasn't, instead of it being a fifteen year pilot, it was an eighteen year pilot. With the first two years being a hundred percent. We we haven't seen that before, um, normally that's not the case, you see it builds, um. The amount of dollars for us is very, very small in the first years, so. It it it's less important that it's a hundred percent because they're obviously doing their building, right? So the the value is a lot less and that will grow, and as that grows, we then give more money into the pilot. So just to clarify about that. So if you look at this and you look at the levy options, um, we just put a bunch down, you could ask for whatever other ones you want, we'll put them all in here. I'm gonna show you some numbers in a minute, but if you look at the far right hand column just for a minute. And just start with the yellow because that's what the levy limit is. If the board elected to go to that levy limit, which is three point zero eight percent. The eight year average for our district in the for our for the levy would be one point nine five percent. If you go down, you can see where it'd be down that column. You go, so if you start with levy increase of two nine zero, you'd see it would be one nine three for the for the eight years. If you go to the last column down to two five, it'd be one eighty, if you went all the way up to the top, you wanna exceed the limit, remember, if you. Ever elected to exceed the levy, you need a super majority vote, right? So if you went to three five, at three five, you would get to an eight year average of of two percent. All right, you do not have to make a decision about the levy tonight. At the next meeting, what you have to decide is whether or not. You plan to exceed the levy limit, okay, that's the first step. That's at the next meeting, we don't have to decide the 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 levy itself. For a few more meetings after you see expenditure budgets and all of those things, okay? Any questions on that right now?
So this is just going through, uh, the teacher retirement system, break, and how it's, um. Varied over the years, but for that next year, it's gone back up to ten point zero two percent. So that's the employer's share on the salaries in our district that for those folks that are members of T R S. And then the next one is E R S, so that's the other retirement system. And you can see it's gone from thirteen point one up to fifteen point two, and that's the one that's increased two percentage points, over two percentage points. So we're allowed to take a, uh, uh, exclusion on the tax cap calculation. And and this just shows you a review of the tax levy, um, the line is the is the, uh, percentage increase and the. Bars are the levy, uh, dollar amounts, and over the years, you can just see, um, how the. District has proposed, but the important thing to notice at the bottom there, you can see the seven year average. Is just one point seven nine percent. That's the average increase of the levy year to year. Two including, right, including twenty three, twenty four, correct.
So so I misspoke if you heard, I think it's a two point zero eight percent last year, it was two point one eight percent last year. And that was the that was the levy limit last year. Um, so if you look, if you go down, you had two point one eight percent, year before that, one nine nine, one nine nine, one four nine. Um so if you look, if you go down, you had two point one eight percent, year before that, one nine nine, one nine nine, one four nine, one seven one. Two four nine and then zero point six eight percent, okay? And and again, just the if you're paying attention to the numbers here, this point, I know it's early in our process, but the seven year average was one seven nine. If you're saying, well, that doesn't add up over here, that's because we're adding in what the eighth year would be. Depending on what levy increase you you choose.
The difference, just so you know, is the difference. Up in the difference column is the difference from the levy limit to the next calculation on that percentage.
But you got that? Really important slide. We leave it on every year. We recently received our uh our most updated. To me, it's amazing what the business office and the board has really done. Um we're the most physically stressed district in two thousand thirteen, fourteen. And now we're at um a point where we barely show up on the fiscal stress. Zero is an anomaly that usually does not happen. Especially when we carry the liability of 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 having to front the money potentially for those poor school. So those numbers are truly excellent and we of course wanna continue there.
Alright, any items for board discussion? The old business? Any new business? Alright then, any board member comments? If not, then we will, I'll call for motion to enter executive session for the purpose of discussing the current litigation. And the employment of particular persons. Is there a second?